And the first item on the agenda, oh, I do have one short statement I have to read that the school has asked us to read in advance of all meetings at their facilities. Governor Northam's Executive Order 63 states that all individuals aged 10 and over shall, when entering, exiting, traveling through, and spending time inside public buildings, including schools, cover their nose and mouth with a face covering. Masks are required within state or local government buildings when accessed for the purpose of securing public services. Enforcement is overseen by the Virginia Department of Health, not the local government. If someone were to issue a complaint with VDH regarding noncompliance by individuals in school buildings, it is possible school closure could be imposed. Understandably, some folks have medical reasons for not wearing masks and would simply respond to VDH with their justifications. Please help us keep schools open for children by following EO 63 until it is lifted or modified. Thank you for your cooperation. Rappahannock County Public Schools Administration. Thank you. And now, let's move on to the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion in regards to the adoption of the agenda?
A moved.
And a second? Thank you, Mr. Parrish. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That takes us to the first item of business. C1 is public comment. Anyone that might wish to speak, please raise your hand. And when I identify you, please approach the microphone. Identify yourself by the name, your name, and the district that you're from. And if you keep your comments to three to five minutes, we should be all set. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? Yes, Ms. Haynes. And I neglected to say, please direct your comments to the board. Thank you.
Take this off to speak.
Yep.
With regard to the comp plan, I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments. One is that there's been little mention of Ms. Adolfi's petition, except the comment that the signers were misled and uninformed and need to be educated. And I just wanted to say, I think that's a mischaracterization of most of those people. Although, in terms of being informed, one of the, I'm not sure if she said it in the meeting because the mics, we didn't have a mic, the sound system wasn't working. I know that Barbara had expressed interest in seeing the maps larger so that you could actually tell where they go, because it's very hard to look at them, even if you take zoning maps and try to put them next to those maps. So she did feel that, I think I can speak for her to say, she felt that we could be better informed about the maps. But generally speaking, I think those people were pretty informed. And as I've been thinking the last couple of days, we have talked about taking out verbiage that talks about promoting growth or encouraging growth. And it just hit me tonight that, yeah, we're not obligated to encourage growth, but we certainly should be managing growth. And I think it's important to realize there is a distinction. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. Anyone else wishing to speak? Carolyn, and then Diane, and then Paige.
That's Leslie.
Carolyn. Oh, I'm so sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought that was someone else, Leslie. Carolyn, and then Leslie, and then Paige.
Carolyn Butler, Sperryville. A very smart man pointed out something to me recently, and I'd like to remind you all of what he said. The thing that we really need to worry about, and the reason we really need to pass this comprehensive plan as soon as possible, do not waste any more time, is Eldon Farms. If that is sold tomorrow, it's up for sale. Somebody could come in here and they could build as many as 100 houses right behind St. Paul's Cemetery. Is that what we want? I don't think anybody that lives in the center of the county would want to see that. And we couldn't stop it. We have, we would have nothing on the books to stop that. So that's the urgent matter. And the other details, we can continue to work on it and improve it. We don't have to wait five years. We could get it, start working on it right away when things come up, and then revise it in a year's time. So please, we don't want to see Eldon Farms go with Orion Homes everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. Yes, I'm so sorry, Leslie, you had your hand up.
I'm Leslie Arnold from Sperryville. I'm hoping that the inclusion of three options for how to deal with the village maps and the amended.
It's very difficult to hear you if you're able to speak up at all. I'm so sorry.
Is this the?
Yes, that's so much better. Thank you.
Suggests that there's a willingness to review the usefulness of the boundaries. I hope we can remove the boundary maps from this version of the comprehensive plan and review what we want the maps to achieve, hopefully without encouraging development, which is what I see them doing at the moment with the lines around them. I think that's it. Thank you. Just the removal of the maps would be great.
Could you tell me your last name again?
Arnold. Leslie Arnold.
Leslie.
Thank you. Ms. Mr. Glanny, I think you had your hand up next.
Go up. Never mind. Paige, I tried. Now it did. Paige Glanny, Jackson District. Quick question, not related to the comp plan. It is hunting season, and I noticed yesterday that Manford's call sign about deer processing had closed on it. Has the county changed who processes deer for the food bank, and/or what's going on?
I sent somebody over there Saturday. I didn't know they closed.
It's got big red closed on it. So there is not an alternative that we know of?
That may have been linked to the berry picking and things like that.
To what?
Don't they have, like, berry picking and stuff on that property as well?
Yeah, but it's not going on now. Manford has had repeated run-ins with the health department, so that's why I assumed what it was, but anyway.
I don't have an answer for that. At my fingertips, I will have to reach out to them and see what the situation is.
But if someone could clear that up and put out an announcement, it would help. Thank you.
We'll look into it. Thank you, Paige. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, Ms. Kressinger.
This thing isn't going to, is that going to work?
Yep, just get closed.
Okay, good. Okay. For kindness sake, I'd like to clarify something that occurred at the last meeting that we had. There was a bit of a furor over a closed meeting that was scheduled. And at that meeting, during the public comment, Chair Smith interrupted to say that she thought she had been misunderstood. Now, the only thing that went in the newspaper was a closed meeting to discuss performance and salaries, but the cause of this uproar, I think, was because the newspaper had actually found somehow an email that had come out prior to that, where Smith wrote in her first email, "Would be a personnel discussion during closed meeting as it relates to the botched notice for the recent joint comprehensive plan." That was the crux of the matter. That was what started conversation and people's comments. And so, I really was not happy when I heard Chair Smith say that she'd been misunderstood, because in effect, in my opinion, that throws three supervisors under the bus, because they were reacting to a quotation of a prior email. And then apparently, Mr. Frazier piled on with extra comments. So I just, I really don't think there was any call for that, and I really want to express my appreciation to the superintendents who were denigrated in this way. The other thing, just really quickly, is according to the comprehensive plan, I watched the video again in which Mr. Conick was talking about the maps. And in that, he referred to the meeting a year ago in October, where the consultant group, the representative, Mr. Coffey, had actually, the whole purpose of this comprehensive plan was to get it in compliance with Virginia State. And so there were, in the minutes which I downloaded, there were compliance with Code of Virginia requirements, and there were four bullet points. Then after that, there was a thing, other recommendations, which were addressing the maps that could be put in at a later time. So in my opinion, these things did not have to go into this plan. And when you think about all the various comments that have been put forth in public comments, and then also by two of the Planning Commission members at the public comment, Mr. Conick actually, in my opinion, had a hissy fit. And you can watch the video. He was extremely displeased that they would have brought up the point about questioning the maps, which, in my opinion, really don't have to be in this thing at this time. And I think Ms. Donahue brought up the point that perhaps that particular element in the comprehensive plan could just be omitted, and it could be addressed at a later time. And so, I'm 100% in getting the comprehensive plan put, done, put to bed, because then different things can be done by, say, amendments, or you can go on to the next five-year plan. But it's crucial to get this thing done, because now this is another whole year that we've been out of compliance, strictly it looks like, just to get these maps in, which I think seem to be more of a problem that they're doing. So I hope that you can take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kressinger. Anyone else wishing to speak? Ms. Barsky.
I would like you to adopt this comprehensive plan as soon as you can, without any delay. There have been so much effort has been put in this. And if you delay it, it's never going to happen. Please adopt the comprehensive plan now, and direct the Planning Commission to get working on the zoning ordinance amendment. That needs to follow, because that's been almost outdated longer than comprehensive plan. And zoning ordinance specifies exactly what needs to go in, or what can go in, or whatnot. Not those comprehensive plan maps that have been discussed, not whether the current zoning is, et cetera. The map, the proposed alternative maps, that kind of map belongs to the zoning ordinance, not the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan maps, as disputed or discussed, they simply identify the commercial village and commercial residential areas as zoned currently. No changes, nothing, maybe except Sperryville's got something else going on. But all the other villages are identified, what's called village residential and village commercial. It's just making it clear. I think that's clear enough for you to please adopt the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barsky. Yes, sir.
I'm Bob Trafton, Piedmont District. I also want to echo the comments about adopting the comp plan. I think you, there's been a lot of work put into it. I'm still concerned about some of the language in there having to do with, where it says "development should be focused in and around county villages." I'm still concerned about that. I feel like the maps, I would encourage you to adopt your option that does not include the village maps. I don't feel like they're, I think they were rushed. I still am not clear on if we have sufficient study and analysis into developing and creating those village boundaries. In the case of Sperryville with the sewer system, I think there's still question on the capacity and the load of the sewer system. I understand, and I missed the Sewer Authority meeting last week, when they had on the agenda to have a consultant look into the capacity of the sewer system. At least in the meeting minutes or the agenda minutes, the consultant proposal that was attached had nothing to do with the capacity of the system. It had to do with developing standards. So I feel like until we have a better handle on the capacity of the Sperryville sewer system, the comp plan map should not be even closely related or tied to that. So I encourage you to adopt the version without the maps. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, Ms. Ramos.
Anita Ramos, Hampton District. I spoke to the Planning Commission not too many months ago on a few little things, but one of the things I suggested to them is that they add a 13th meeting out of every year to just touch on the comprehensive plan and tidy it up as necessary. And I could, I would suggest to you all, too, that you coordinate with them and create a time that you all look at it after they have, in case they have some suggestions. This would help along the way to the five-year plan that we're supposed to be doing, anyway. I'm a huge fan of maps. I always have been. And I really believe in these maps that have been proposed to show where the villages are, and always have been. There's nothing new on these maps that I know of. So I urge you to think hard. You may not have to do it this moment, this day, this, you know, this time around, but please, you've got to get some maps in there and make them obvious as to where this more intensive development goes, or people will think you can just develop any old place. And that's the point of those maps, is to show you where the villages are and what their boundaries are, period. I realize there's some difficulties with Sperryville, but I think those can work out, maybe with splitting the map in some ways, or something like that. So anyway, I'd say I'm a fan of maps, and when I look at a map, I know what it means.
Thank you, Anita. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes.
Can everybody hear me? Robert Yow from the Piedmont District. I just want to say that I think it's time-sensitive that we get this comprehensive plan passed. Maybe not tonight, but definitely before the end of the year. We're going to have a different Planning Commission next year, and I think the current chair has done a very good, a lot of work. I think the maps that are in there are, maybe they're not perfect, but I think they should be in there. And if they need to be altered, let's do so down the road. But let's get some maps in the comprehensive plan, because who knows? If we adopt them without the maps, and what if it's two, three years before any plan comes together to put the maps in? So let's get something now, and then if we have to fix it later, we do that, but at least there's something. Otherwise, like I said, it might be a year, two, three, 10 years down the road before this is brought up again. So in the comprehensive, the Planning Commission has a lot of work that they have to do after this plan. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, and with that, I would declare this public comment, period, closed. That takes us on to the first item on the agenda, under Continued Business, the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. I'm not sure how everyone else is disposed to handle this, but I'd like to talk about the other cleanup, small cleanup items first, that I think we have, and then work through the suggestions for dealing with maps, and spend probably the bulk of the time on that. So, a couple of additions that we've had, just to kind of tee this up, Gary or Ms. Donahue, would you like to lead us in a discussion of the language that we received from the broadband committee?
Certainly. I believe when we were basically discussing with Piedmont Broadband, the issue about the towers and what were allowed or are allowed in the county came up. Currently, it stands that you have to have a wooden pole to put an antenna on. And what I am hoping for is that we can broaden that language to allow for, not necessarily just Piedmont Broadband, but other companies that may be interested in coming into the county, that would be able to do towers at the 80-foot level, which, it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that most of our trees are about at the 80-foot level. So it wouldn't necessarily be above the tree line, but darn close, depending on where it's located. But really trying to get out of the wooden pole words. So Mr. Curry helped me with the change that I think we all have copies of, no wireless communication facilities other than administrative review eligible projects, which I'll get Mr. Curry to explain why that's important, as prescribed by Code of Virginia 15.2231641, or those that are 80 feet or shorter above ground level and serve broadband internet-based services, or Rappahannock County Public Safety Service. Should be permitted in Rappahannock County. And basically, that'll allow for that type of tower, and then you go into the zoning to put your camouflage and all the other regulations that are required for that particular tower.
Mr. Curry, did you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I'll just note, the language that came from the Planning Commission mentioned "small cell" in place of administrative review eligible projects. And in reading the Code of Virginia, there are some projects that the Board of Supervisors cannot require special exceptions for, other than quote-unquote "small cell." And so that's why this specific wording is added, to stay aligned with the Code of Virginia. There's been discussion among the board members, after hearing from other, from some providers, that you may want to make it easier for providers to have shorter towers. And right now, in your zoning ordinance, there is an exemption completely from zoning for the 80-foot timber towers, but our providers have told us that doesn't do them a lot of good, because it's hard to get a 100-foot pole to the top of a mountain buried 20 feet in the ground, so it sticks up. And so they want to use other types of towers. The planning, the comprehensive plan as written currently would not support that. Right now, it requires every tower, except for those that you are precluded from having a special exception for by the Code of Virginia, to go through the special exception process. And once they go through the special exception process, you must follow a long list of requirements on where they can and can't go, and all those things. So if the board wants to have more flexibility for the shorter towers for broadband or public safety, then language should be inserted in the comp plan to allow you to amend your ordinance at some later time to provide that flexibility. And that's what this would do.
Thank you.
Actually, the requirements in the ordinance can be waived by the board, but that gets into a bit of a, maybe a sticky problem, because you have to waive it here, maybe not waive it there, but I think, excuse me, I think it's good to have language in the comp plan, but I don't think we're hitting a brick wall in the zoning ordinance.
I think ultimately, my recommendation for the zoning ordinance would be to have these shorter towers for these specific purposes to be permitted by right with certain specific requirements.
Administrative review is better than by right.
Rather than being completely exempted from the zoning ordinance and have no say as to how close to a property line or anything else they are.
Exactly, yeah.
And staff will be bringing two options to the board for that at a future meeting, the exemption route and then the permitted by right route.
Sounds good.
But I think in terms of what we are hoping to accomplish for this meeting to address...
I think this is good.
I think this will meet our purposes for this version of the comp plan. Is there any other thoughts or misgivings about? All right.
So I'll take that consensus to mean that this change should be inserted into the final document.
I believe that to be the case, yes. Thank you, Gary.
I was on the board when we approved that change in the zoning ordinance, but I don't think anybody's ever used it. It's just too difficult.
All right. I also did go ahead and submit some changes to cultural resources that I received from Barbara Black. I broke it up a little bit differently and concluded it a little bit differently, but other than that, it was largely what I received from Barbara Black. I don't think it contained anything particularly different or contentious. I wasn't sure how all my peers felt, but I thought it was a good update and probably a little bit better organized than what was already in there.
And could you drive me to exactly where this would be inserted? Again, I know that we had some email.
Oh, dear.
What would be inserting?
It would, let me find the email.
It's Cultural Resources, so it's...
Page 72?
Yeah, I think so.
Are we going to list every possible thing that a person may want to do?
Well, this was actually very few updates, and, I mean, I think it is a more accurate reflection. I know that it could be argued that we're capturing a lot of detail, but if we're going to revisit things like geology, and people have an interest in this, I didn't think it was very contentious and thought it was a good update. It would be, I suggest it supplant the two paragraphs at the bottom of page 72, that we delete those and state these few paragraphs, and then leave the final paragraph at the top of page 73 where it is. And I had promised to do that, and if the board feels inclined to include those changes, that's great. If we are disinclined, then that's fine, too.
Looks good to me.
I agree.
All right. If there's no further discussion on that, I think we should go ahead and fold those changes in for the December meeting.
Okay.
That takes us through those two items. I had promised also, as long as I'm talking through things I promised to do, I promised to listen in on the Water and Sewer Authority meeting last Thursday evening, and I did, and they did engage with the consultant from Luray. And they are having him work on some procedures initially and updating the manual. There is a scope of work that they believe that they should be addressing, and, you know, they have to pick a way forward. But I suspect they will work through the manual, they'll work on the infiltration and inflow question that they have currently, and try to get an assessment on that. They also have wanted to address capacity concerns and overall health of the plant. So there is a scope of work that they look to be doing. How quickly that will materialize, I don't know. I don't think anybody knows. But they are beginning to engage the consultant to that end. And I had listened in on the conversation and spoke briefly at the meeting, and then I sent to the chairman some language that I suggested we include, and they came back back with a revision that I think is quite reasonable. And, oh dear, someone didn't include my initial.
This being page 70?
Yeah, it's in the same neighborhood, Public Utilities. So, it'd be on page 71, where it talks about the village of Sperryville and the town of And I know it's difficult to follow along. I just got this response this afternoon, so I apologize for not having it to you earlier. The timing of the meeting just left a short runway. So, at the top of page 71, where it reads, "The village of Sperryville and the town of Washington have the county's only wastewater treatment facilities," I suggest we break that paragraph into two paragraphs and have the first paragraph address Sperryville and that system, and have the second paragraph address the town of Washington's system. So, it would read, as it's laid out now, up until "capacity," which is the end of the second sentence, right before the town of Washington system begins. So, after "capacity," it would read, "The Rappahannock County Water and Sewer Authority, which operates the facility in Sperryville, has engaged consultants as of November 2020 to assess current and future plant capacity, addressing the existing infiltration and inflow situation, and assess pipeline, system capacity, and adequacy within the current service area. The result of these assessments are expected to be received soon in 2021 and may impact a future revision of this plan." So, I think that's very reasonable wording. It's very close to what I sent to them. It's sort of a "we don't know what we don't know" statement at this point, but it calls attention to the work that's being done and the need to revisit it in the future. So, if folks think that's agreeable, I'll forward that to Mr. Curry for inclusion at the December meeting. And I'll just read it again because I know this is a lot to take in on the fly. So, at the end of the second sentence and the second paragraph on page 71, it would read, "The Rappahannock County Water and Sewer Authority, which operates the facility in Sperryville, has engaged consultants as of November 2020 to assess current and future plant capacity, address the existing infiltration and inflow situation, and assess pipeline system capacity and adequacy within the current service area. The result of these assessments are expected to be received soon in 2021 and may impact a future revision of this plan."
Have they signed a contract with this company?
I don't think they have. My perception, and I'm not involved in all of those meetings, and they may have reached back to you, Mr. Curry, is the procurement process for this?
They have a small purchasing policy, and if it exceeds that, then they'll have to follow the state code.
Yeah, so they had some questions about that. It sounded like they were going to move forward with certain things.
It sounds like it, but it's possible that the deal may fall through and they may not be hired after all.
Right. I mean, I don't think this is overly specific to where it names a consultant or expectations from the study.
Yeah. So, maybe you want to be a little more vague, as like, as considering hiring a...
Well, I can call up the language that I sent, which I thought was a little bit more general. What I'd sent initially was, "The Rappahannock County Water and Sewer Authority, which operates the facility in Sperryville, is currently engaging consultants to assess infiltration and inflow capacity and the soundness of that system. The resulting documents should be visited in future revisions of this plan."
Okay, I guess that's vague enough.
That's what I sent. So, if you would like to be a little more general...
No, no, that's okay.
It hits all the same notes, but a little...
Right, I'm just saying it's quite possible.
With a few less words.
It doesn't happen. The other thing is, it talks in here about having two systems, Sperryville and Washington, but there's another system at the school.
There are two systems. There, I mean, each school has...
Each school has a system. They're not mentioned in here?
Hmm.
I guess technically, A-lean has a system as well.
And A-lean is in here.
The school systems aren't providing service to anybody in the school.
Probably don't need to be mentioned.
Not Public Utilities, I'd say.
Okay.
So, I mean, I can include the language that I crafted, or I can include the language that the RCWSA sent over, whichever.
I think since they vetted, you gave them some place to start, and they came back with some suggested changes, we should probably adopt what they suggested.
I thought it was, I mean, it's just a little bit more elaborate, but it's the same general tone.
And then...
They did also, I did also point out to them, you know, there was some concern about, well, when the study is done, will it, you know, how will things be brought forward? And on page 92, there is considerable discussion about continued planning. And so, I suggested to them that the results of the study and any action, if any, is needed fall under, oh, it's not page 92. Let me find it.
One...
Let me find it, it's in my email.
108?
108.
108.
Continued planning. So, to my mind, "Continued planning number five, changes in development trends to the local economy or other unforeseen factors may make amending the goals, policies, or principles of the plan desirable." I don't feel the need to be overly specific beyond that because it sort of falls under, well, if we have, if we get a census that kind of, we have to take another look, or an agricultural study that we have to take another look, or fire and rescue is going to make us take a second look soon. It sort of falls into that unforeseen events that we do have to go back and address and should. But I don't think we should enumerate them all in the Continued Planning section, or we're essentially writing the whole plan over again.
It seems like you've already covered it in the first edition. That's fine.
Okay. So, I'll follow up with the authority and let them know of our attentions to include the first set of additions and not to be any more specific regarding the Continued Planning So, I think those were the follow-through items that I had. Were there other follow-through items that folks had that wanted to speak to those?
Did you want to talk about the Vincent Bayes stuff? Didn't you have some water and...
Oh, Gary and I worked through it, and there, that doesn't need to be in this one.
Okay.
We've got to fine tune some more of the geography and all that.
Geology.
Yep.
I mentioned to one or more board members before the meeting that I thought if we could leave this meeting with the substantive changes that the board wants to see, and then empower staff to work through any wording modification, changes necessary between now and December 7th, when the document could be presented back to the board. And there's some people here presented some potential wording, whichs to that's and things like that, that we could go ahead and get that taken care of between now and December 7th, and then have a document available. And if there are any other wording-type changes that don't change the intent of the plan, but improve readability here and there, then we can just do that offline and not have to edit it here.
Trust me. Well, I think I already committed to doing a thorough proofreading of it, and I wanted it to be done by tonight, and I'm getting there. So, if it's a pleasure of the board, I can just hand my document to you, Mr. Curry, with handwritten edits. And for transparency, you can post it if you want, but certainly non-substantive typographic, stylistic things, and nothing more.
I did want to revisit some of the public comment. I mean, I know that there's a lot of consternation about development around the villages and the word encourage. And I think the word encourage is there because you're trying to discourage growth all over the countryside. And so, in the process of discouraging growth all over the countryside and infill throughout the countryside, you are encouraging a higher concentration around the villages. And a lot of the concentration seems to be around, you know, the end of a certain paragraph where it says, "Development should continue to be focused in or around the county's villages." But at the beginning of that section, which is on page 95 under Residential Development, it's pretty clear that the review of existing land use patterns indicates that residential development is either of low or medium density, as presented, as permitted by the current zoning ordinance, with low-density development, one dwelling per 25 acres in agricultural and conservation, and medium-density, one dwelling per one to five acres proximal to areas in residential, residential village, residential and rural residential zoning districts. So, I think, to my mind, you know, the concentration and the intensity is specified in that section as well as, you know, to offset the word focusing. So, as, with a lot of things in the plan, it steers you in one direction, but it also limits you as to how much you can use that direction, which is, I think, a very healthy result of the plan. I do recognize that we received a document with 90-some signatures. It had many items stated in it, probably more than a dozen points. So, it's really difficult to know, you know, what compelled folks to sign. Of the 90-some signatures, I think it was presented, you know, as Sperryville signatures, but more than 40 of the folks on the document don't live in Sperryville. So, I certainly would welcome everybody to have input into public meetings and sign petitions, but I need to look at who signed it and what's on it. And some of the things that were on it historically, I think we need to talk about. And one is that there needs to be community meetings, was one of the things on the document. Well, there were community meetings. The community meetings were held in 2015 and 2016. We're still working through that version of the comp plan. We've got to push it through in one form or another, and we have got to move on to the ordinances. Those have continued to languish. And so, we did do the community meetings in 2015 and 2016 before my time on this board. I know Mr. Parrish was on the Planning Commission when I first joined the board. I was on the Planning Commission last year. And as I mentioned at the other work session that we had, I fought very hard for there to be more community meetings. And I was the only commissioner that was interested in conducting additional meetings. And so, we are a board or a commission, we function as a commission. We move business along by votes, and I was a minority of one. And so, additional meetings did not take place in the different villages and towns throughout the county. There were several things I championed at that meeting, but I was the only one that wanted to do them. So, we moved through last year in 2019 with me on the Planning Commission, and Mr. Frazier has been very kind and served this year as well to conclude this work. And I'm trying to think, what else was on? There was concern over MAPS also on that petition. And I guess, to my mind, that's the next topic that we're approaching in our discussion this evening. And, you know, I guess it's two sides to the coin. Some people see MAPS as a way that is going to encourage growth and development. I guess I'm of the mind that MAPS show me clearly where to draw the line, literally. And I don't have any better options at my disposal right now than what we've gotten. So, I guess that's my way of saying, I'd love to hear what others have to hear, say about it. And I know that there have been several options added to the agenda tonight, and I'd like to hear the genesis and reasoning behind those items.
I will say that I asked Mr. Curry to look at different options, given the feedback I've been receiving by people from throughout the county, not just Wakefield. There's a feeling, I think, that we're trying to push something through that the citizens don't agree with, in my opinion. And so, I wanted to look at, were there other options that we could look to move forward instead of stalling everything and keep the citizens happy when we do it? So, Mr. Curry, I don't know if you want to walk through the three?
Happy to.
So, that all can hear?
The three documents were attached to board docs and are available to the public. And the three main options as presented, of course, I guess there's four, keep it exactly the way it is. Option A is presented as retain the Planning Commission future land use maps with an altered narrative. Option B, use existing land use maps, not future land use maps, based on the zoning maps with altered narrative, and then use no future land use maps with altered narrative. And I imagine there are any number of other options that the board could choose to use, and you could base a change for a desired option on one of these, if it got you to the right starting point. All of the options include an added two sentences to Chapter 5. And Chapter 5, to refresh your memory, introduces the village areas and talks about each of the village areas and what sort of amenities are in each of the areas. And it's not a planning section, per se, it's an existing conditions section. And the sentences that are added to that speak to some of the current concerns that were brought up by the Planning Commission, that the aerial maps presented therein could be confused to be a representation of what the villages are from a planning perspective. So, those sentences are, the sentences are proposed to be, "The attached aerial maps show the general location of these unincorporated villages in relation to the surrounding area. These are intended to illustrate a generalized vicinity and do not necessarily indicate nor correlate to specific zoning or other boundaries or delineations." And that's simply just to make sure we steer the reader away from thinking those aerial maps are anything other than just a picture for them to see what's in the area. So, all the options have that. So, for Option A, retaining the existing maps, changes then go on to, over towards page, I believe, 96 in the Residential Development section, and add a sentence to, the current sentence that talks, that starts, "As noted in the preceding chapters, this plan envisions and encourages that future residential and commercial development will be focused in around, in or around the major villages." And then it continues on, "Consistent with the undeveloped potential of the current zoning district designations." So, there's a lot of discussion at the Planning Commission level as to whether rezoning was encouraged within the village boundary or not, or encouraged outside the village boundary or not. This change makes it clear that the intent is that the, that development should be directed towards the villages, but directed towards the villages where there is existing development potential due to the current zoning. It also removes the last half, or last portion of the sentence for the next paragraph that was confusing relative to that point. And that sentence read, "The designated areas in these zoning categories provide for anticipated development and envisioned growth during the next five to 10 years." It continued on, "Without rezoning any additional areas outside the existing villages or the expansion of existing residential and commercial zones in the existing villages." That part is very confusing, and the period was just placed after the next five to 10 years. So, those changes could be made, retain the maps as presented, and constrain the narrative to make it clear that no rezonings were anticipated to be needed to accommodate the growth that is anticipated by this comprehensive plan, which is rather small. The next option is similar. The next option is similar, but it moves away from the concept of including future land use maps. Now, the Code of Virginia requires you to have a future land use plan, but it doesn't require you to have a future land use map. So the future land use map, plan is therefore in narrative with existing land use maps. And so that requires some change to the wording to remove the concept of future land use maps, and that is identified within the sections. And then the future land use, the Residential Development section is broken into two portions because the current section, while it's titled Residential Development, it speaks to residential and commercial, and it's a little bit confusing. So that Residential Development section is broken in half with the residential portion remaining, and then this back half titled Future Land Use. And this would be your Future Land Use Plan, essentially the portion of the overall chapter. And it states, "As noted in Chapter 5, Rappahannock County is home to the incorporated town of Washington and five primary village areas, Amosville, Chester Gap, Flynn Hills, Sperryville, and Woodville. These village areas are not incorporated and have no formal boundaries, but represent development patterns that have taken place over the history of the county. Current zoning in and around the village areas generally reflects the current and historical uses of the land. As noted in the preceding chapters, this plan envisions and encourages that future residential and commercial development be focused in and around the major villages," and then the same port, statement that was in the other option, "consistent with the undeveloped potential of the current zoning district designations." And the last paragraph references existing land use maps, not future land use maps. "To give greater clarity to this objective in light of the lack of administrative village boundaries, maps reflecting the current zoning districts near the town of Washington and the village areas are presented as map numbers 15A through F. These maps identify the land that is not currently zoned resource conservation. The resource conservation district is defined as land zoned agriculture or conservation and which has relatively limited development potential." So it doesn't, the plan keeps the Future Land Use Plan in narrative form and no maps. And then lastly, the version that has recommends no maps, not existing land use maps, not future land use maps. And so it also breaks the Residential Development section into two parts with the Future Land Use section added, and it reads, "As noted in Chapter 5, Rappahannock County is home to the incorporated town of Washington and five primary village areas," and list the areas. "These village areas are not incorporated and have no formal boundaries, but represent development patterns that have taken place over the history of the county. Current zoning in and around the village areas generally reflects current and historical uses of land. As noted in the preceding chapters, this plan envisions and encourages that future residential and commercial development be focused in or around the major villages, consistent with the undeveloped potential of the current zoning district designations, period." And then removes entirely the paragraph that currently speaks to the maps. I don't know if that helped or hurt the discussion, but those are the three options.
Should be willing to repeat that.
Yeah. Have to catch my breath first.
After a 10-minute break.
Thank you for going through all that.
Yep.
So Robert Yow mentioned that if we didn't get something done this year, we might be looking for a long delay in this process. Al Henry mentioned the same thing at our last meeting, and I fear that they're both right. Yow, two years ago, when I was on the Planning Commission, we actually had a consensus to go forward with the public hearings at that time. And, and the meeting that we were going to do that, we had a big ice storm, and the meeting was canceled, and so was the next one. And then it went on to the following year with a new board. But, you know, ironically, this could have happened two years ago, this process of the hearings and the public comments and the fine tuning that goes on. So the Berkeley Group was hired to review the plan and make suggestions. And when it came to the maps, they did say that a lot of counties did have particular maps, but it wasn't necessary, and that, in fact, that if there were no specific maps, we in essence had more control over what went on throughout the county. And so I have had phone calls all day long, and I've had a lot of emails, and I have yet to talk to anybody personally that's in favor of these maps that are presented that put a boundary around the towns, the villages. And I got, I support this Option C, the, and for a couple of reasons. One is that we can go ahead and move forward without adopting something that's literally half-baked and, and come back to it in the near future after we move on with, you know, our zoning ordinances and stuff that are more pressing and imminent and dangerous to us. And the reason I'm not too worried about this idea being dangerous is that this is what we've been dealing with for many, many years, and we've had no problems so far. And so my suggestion is we go on with this Option C, and, and then we really need to get this wrapped, if we can agree to that tonight, and then we can vote on this at our next meeting, then next year we can go on with all our tweaking of the zoning ordinances and then come back to these maps. And this will give people time to really think about it because it all came up kind of at the last minute, and nobody's really had time to deal with it. I know that it's not just Sperryville, it was Amosville and, and to some extent, some of the other villages. I do want to point out that this has nothing to do, for example, with the commercial zoning around, in our commercial area, or actually the town of Washington. This is not part of that. This is just strictly not adopting the specific maps that have a circle, an arbitrary circle around, around our villages. That's my, that's my feeling on it.
If I could, a point of clarification, you say adopt it with the commercial map as proposed by the Planning Commission, but not the residential maps? Then we could iron out the questions or problems that the public, I actually think it's a perception problem, but if it's a problem, I guess we have to deal with it. I could agree to that.
That'd be great. I appreciate that. I think it's the way we can move forward the fastest way.
I'm sorry, I spoke over you.
I'm just saying, I appreciate that. I do think this is the way we can move forward the most expediently.
So could, but could we include this language as proposed by Ms. Donahue and Mr. Curry?
Absolutely. Yeah.
So you're leaning toward Option C?
Option C.
And you're agreeing?
I can agree to that. With those two provisions, if I understood that correctly, the commercial?
Right. It doesn't affect the commercial. That's in a separate section.
Well, I just want to make sure we're talking about the same thing. So I think Mr. Parrish is speaking about the Commercial Area Plan in Appendix A, which I think is map number?
Right.
19, 18, or something. And it would be retained, and I've already told the board, while there is a link between the ordinance and the comp plan, changing the comp plan can't automatically change the ordinance because there are extra public hearing requirements for that.
Right.
You can handle that coming up.
But I think the main thing is, if we're going to deal with those great big aerial photographs that don't actually delineate anything, this language is important that you proposed, correct?
Critical. And I think ultimately, it's, and as I said a couple of meetings ago, it's the narrative that is most important to me. If you have a map, what does it mean? If you don't have a map, what does it mean? And what type of map do you have? So if there is no map, I do think that the language in Option C would help make it very clear to any reader what the board's intent is. And that is that you're really not looking from a future land use perspective. We are not guiding growth in the county from that which is already zoned. The zoning already steers growth, just as it's, as it's been developed, zoned since the 80s.
Right.
And the board may see one-off zoning requests come along. And it doesn't necessarily preclude the board from approving a zoning request as it comes in, as you just had one not too long ago with the Mill property wanting to change from RR5 to HC. You can analyze those things, but it isn't supporting it that we want to rezone a particular area in a particular way. It's simply just saying, for the population growth that we foresee happening here in the community, which I believe is talked about in Chapter 3, we don't need to have any large future changes to our current development potential. It can happen organically with our existing zoning. Now, you can, you can change that in the future and go back and look and see, well, maybe there is a certain area of the county that we want to focus on for development or focus totally away from for development. But that would be a future task after much more study.
I did wonder if it would be clear, too, to add on page 96, where it says, "As noted in the preceding chapters, this plan envisions and encourages that future residential and commercial development be focused in or around the major villages." I think we should add in Commercial Overlay District there because that's really where we want commercial development. Because that's not really in or around the villages. It's at the bottom of the third paragraph.
What page are you on?
Page 96.
I think it's one of the six if you're looking at the screen.
That, that would be the, the main paragraph that is modified in each one of these options.
Okay. Let's see what option I have up now.
That's under Economic Development, isn't it?
It's under Residential Development, but it's the third paragraph on page 96, which is the one, two, three, fourth paragraph overall in the section. If I'm following you correctly.
Yep, it's under Residential Development. You have fewer paragraphs than I do. No, that's correct.
Is it the last one right before Historic? Is that the one?
It's a portion that you aren't, that you don't have on here.
What, you wanted to insert there? It must have been an earlier draft? Your hard copy?
I just think it should. It's the one you printed out, it would have been mid-September. Where, where it says, encourages that future residential and commercial development be focused in or around major villages. I think it should also mention the Commercial Overlay District there because that's really where we want commercial development.
That, that is the last sentence of?
I think, what? That's a separate section, isn't it?
That's under Economic Development, a couple paragraphs.
Yeah, that's our, that's separate from the villages.
Well, I see it.
No, it's, in Option C, it is essentially the last sentence. And it, it says, "As noted in the preceding chapters, this plan envisions and encourages that future residential and commercial development be focused in and around the major villages, consistent with the undeveloped potential of the current zoning district designations." And Miss, Miss Point is that that doesn't mention the commercial area, the designated commercial area.
But I think with that addition, though, maybe if you're saying it's consistent with undeveloped potential and the Commercial Overlay District is undeveloped potential.
Yes.
I think that you've resolved that question there.
So, but it may be, it may make sense to change Option C to read, "As noted in the preceding chapters, this plan envisions and encourages that future residential and commercial development be focused in and around the major villages and the commercial areas designated in Appendix A."
Right.
Consistent with?
I mean, I, I think, you know, to me, that's, if you're saying we want commercial development, that's where we should be focusing people to go if they want to pursue commercial development. And if that's what we mean, I think that we should say it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a logical extension of the concept, so.
So the only dangerous word is around and around. I mean, I guess there's no avoiding it, but in is one thing, and around is how far away is around? How far does that go?
I had the word proximal before, and, and the Planning Commission didn't like it and changed it to in and around.
You had what, what word?
Proximal, which is basically adjacent to, close, close to.
Same as around.
Yeah. The fact that it's all based on the existing development potential, it really doesn't matter.
Right. So, yeah, I think we can go with this and keep the ball rolling.
So we have two for Option C, Ms. Donahue and Mr. Whitson.
I'd go with C.
Mr. Whitson?
Yeah, I appreciate what Ms. Butler said during the public comment period. I think we do have to put the document away, but as long as we don't do harm in putting it away, and I think this is a, this is a good way to do it. So we put the document on the record, protect us, and let's, let's revisit it when we can all dig deeper into this question of maps. So I'm okay with Option C.
Well, I just hope that we don't regret it, not taking a harder line in adopting Option A, but, you know, it's the will of the board.
Thank you.
So, do we have any other?
So I want to be, I want to be clear that it's okay for me to include the addition that I just spoke in the sentence, "As noted in the preceding chapters, this plan envisions and encourages that future residential and commercial development be focused in and around the major villages and within the commercial area as defined in Appendix A, consistent with the undeveloped potential, blah, blah, blah."
I think that's correct.
I don't see?
I don't see any problem with that. Hopefully.
All based on the underlying?
And so what's the, what, what do we end up with in terms of maps as a general term? What, under Option C? Is it just the original?
Option C has no maps in Chapter 7.
Okay.
Retains the maps in Chapter 5 with the statement that the maps aren't what you think, aren't, are just maps. I mean, they're not. And then it retains the map in Appendix A, which is the Commercial Area Plan, which has a rather peculiar link to the zoning ordinance, which, when you modify the zoning ordinance, it would be my strong recommendation to break that link and just make that Commercial Area map on your zoning map. And then the comp plan can continue to be this visionary document of what you want to see in the future, and the zoning map can be what it is now. And you could, you could then adopt a comp plan in the future with a different Commercial Area map in a different shape, and it would be your goal to get there someday through incremental rezoning or a county-sponsored rezoning or something.
Mr. Fraser, is that, that's all good with you?
Yeah. I, I'm fine with it.
But I think that has us through all of the changes. Was there anything else that you needed clarification on, Gary, so we can adopt this in December?
There, there was one other thing that Mr. Parrish mentioned at an earlier meeting regarding the country stores and wanting the document to support our current country stores and support bringing maybe some of our country stores that have not managed so well back to life someday, or at least put some language that encourages that so that you might be able to change your zoning ordinance to better support it. I think one place to do that, if the board wanted, would be on page 92, and that's Principle 7, which is promote only economic growth that assists in maintaining our existing balance and is compatible with the environmental quality and rural character and does not adversely affect active farm operations, forestry operations, residential neighborhoods, the tourist industry, and the county's fiscal stability. And then there are several policies. I think you could add a Policy Number 11 that reads something like, recognize the value of country stores "Recognize the value of country stores to the citizen's way of life and encourage their continued operation or re-establishment in cases where they have closed." And so, thinking that, I know you've had issues in the past where you've had some country stores that have closed, they're, they don't meet the underlying zoning, and so after two years, they lose their vested right to reopen. So, I think with some language like this, when you reopen the zoning ordinance, you could probably find ways to write in some specifics on how a country store would go about reopening long, if it were closed for more than two years. The details of that would have to come in the ordinance, but I think this would signal to the world and anybody who may, you know, own one of these, that the county thinks that they're important, or the board thinks they're important.
I appreciate that. I think that it's not just a matter of a convenience, but it's also really a central part of the community when the people in a certain area get together and go to the store. And I also think after this pandemic, it's changing our lifestyle to a degree, and people are not, you know, in town at work when they go buy, you know, get their groceries and their little bits of hardware and their pharmacy stuff. They could actually just, you know, stay home and walk to the store or whatever and get what they need and have a visit with their neighbors.
Can we hear it one more time, please, Gary?
Yeah, and I'm not wish for this language.
Just to make sure we're doing, doing what we want to do and not doing something that we don't want to do.
I literally just wrote this while you were talking about the other stuff, so. I thought before maybe it could be inserted within Number 10, which reads, "Recognize the value of businesses, business establishments in designated growth areas to support essential local needs consistent with the scenic and agricultural values of our rural county." But these are kind of by definition not in your growth areas. You know, Laurel Mills and FD Valley, other sort of stores, and so that really doesn't fit that mold. So, I think trying to modify that language probably isn't the best way to do it. So, what I wrote was, "Recognize the value of country stores to the citizen's way of life and encourage their continued operation or re-establishment in cases where they have closed."
I'm wondering if anyone knows why the section was deleted. It looks like it was 11.
Mm-hmm.
"Encourage village and county business uses such as small groceries, farm stores, food pantries, and other opportunities for general food and supply chain needs to support village and county residential needs." Does anybody know why that was deleted?
No, it's, there was a lot of changes made back in around 2008 that never actually saw any work by the Planning Commission. It was just done by, I'm not trying to throw them under the bus, but John was working on it, and then when he retired, it was like 2016, we started looking at some of that work, and it had to be quite a bit of it reworded. So, it may have happened and we didn't notice that.
And I would caution you, this is an area where some of the changes that are captured, maybe changes from a change, could be a change from a 2016 change rather than a change from the 2004, so I'm going to go ahead and pull up the 2004.
I think that was, I want to say that was language that you just read, Ms. Donahue, was the language that Mr. Kohler had inserted at one point. I don't know why it didn't make the final cut. That's why I was sort of paging, because I sort of remembered that at one point in time, something to that effect. I think the language that Gary has crafted will keep in place some resources that are appropriate for remote areas, and that's why they were approved in the first place, and not allow things that we, that we don't want to happen. So, I think that's good language.
So, I can't see with or without my glasses. Principle 7, the section that was deleted was not in the 2004 plan, so it was something, like Ms. Smith noted, was added and then taken back out before it got to you.
So, your proposal is to add Number 11?
Correct.
Okay.
It's tailored specifically for country stores, as I read, or as you modify.
Yep. I think it's great.
Any other thoughts on that section? All right. Any other changes we should address before we consider this version complete and move on to the December meeting?
And just, yeah, again, I'll bring, I'll get my typo review done as quickly as possible and get it to you, and you're welcome to post it, so there's no question, I'm not changing substance.
Did you need anything from the board, Gary, in order to pull this version together for the December 7th meeting?
No, so just to be clear, be incorporating the recommended change to the broadband section about the shorter towers, be incorporating the cultural resources insert, be incorporating the water and sewer language that you will be emailing.
And I'll email that, too, yes.
We'll be incorporating whatever non-substantive wording changes come through or that we find. We'll incorporate Version C of the Page 96, the Future Land Use Plan, as modified tonight, referencing the commercial area, and then we'll add Principles, Policy 11 under Principle 7 relative to country stores.
That sounds like it's captured everything. All right. All right, let's take a short recess, let's take about five, 10 minutes to stretch, and then come back and finish up.
Kind of a tight spot is they have passed in their reconvened session amended budget that includes a $500 bonus plus employee share of FICO, which makes it $538.25.
Excuse me, could you turn your microphones out? We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now? Test?
No, no.
No? Maybe it's just the volume?
When you tap it, there's something happens, but you're not voices.
Hello? I think just get closer.
When you were really close like that, it could be heard, Gary.
Just put it in your mouth. Sorry. Hopefully that's better?
Yeah.
Oh, the videographer didn't want me to swallow the mic, so. The General Assembly passed in their recent reconvened session a budget that includes a $500 bonus for sworn law enforcement officers. That includes employee portion of FICO. And the governor, to my knowledge, and I haven't had a chance to really look today, has not approved that yet, but did send some comments back to the General Assembly. Usually when the General Assembly does this, there's a bit of a, I don't know, hitch to it. And the way the financing works from the state, our employees are categorized by the State Compensation Board into various categories. And that $500 bonus for sworn law enforcement officers, we have in the state system eight sworn law enforcement officers. And we have more than eight sworn law enforcement officers. They just don't happen to be categorized as that in the State Compensation Board system. And we don't have enough time today to talk through all the intricacies of that. It just is what it is. And so, the Board of Supervisors, the county, stands to get about $4,000 from the state for those eight officers. And if the General Assembly, if the governor approves this, then you will have to pass that on to those eight. But that puts this board in a, and they intended this to happen on December 1, which is practically impossible because local boards of supervisors in counties cannot grant monetary bonuses to employees without first adopting an ordinance. And you can't adopt an ordinance unless you have a public hearing that's been advertised in the paper for two weeks. And the governor still hasn't signed it. So we're not sure what's going to happen, but to position the board the best possible for the eventuality of these, this bonus money coming our way, if you were to try to get that bonus out before Christmas, which means the second payroll in December, you need to have that public hearing at your December 7 meeting, which is why I've suggested that you discuss this on this, this meeting agenda. So I've drafted a preliminary ordinance and preliminary public hearing ad, but with blanks for who's going to get this bonus. Is it only the eight sworn officers? Is it all officers? Is it all employees of the sheriff's office? Is it all county employees? And so I leave that to the board to consider based on input that you've had from the public over time, knowing that you will only get the $4,000 from the state, $4,000 plus FICO. And you would have to cover the rest with county funds, which you have based on the use of Public Safety Payroll for the CARES Act. So the funding of this is not a problem. The appropriateness is where the board has to make some tough decisions. And the General Assembly has put you in impossible timing, but this is the best we can do relative to that.
Well, I guess I'll be the first one to maybe take heat on this, but I understand that we didn't give any employees, county employees, a raise this year. But, you know, the situation that we're in right now countywide with a lot of people out of work or reduced work, I, I just have a hard problem giving our dedicated county employees a raise when they haven't missed a paycheck. So I don't think, if, you know, if everybody sits back and looks at it, I don't, I don't think any of our employees would want to see a hardship placed upon their next door neighbor so that they could get an extra $500, you know, bonus. I believe, you know, the board ought to limit it to just the employees of the Sheriff's Department.
How many, besides the, the eight that are in the Compensation Board system, if you extend it beyond sworn officers and then add other employees, question one, how many total Sheriff's Department employees are there? And then question two, what would be the cash outlay minus the $4,000 coming from the state?
There are 22 full-time employees in the sheriff's office. And so that includes the eight.
Okay.
And there are also, and they may not all be, all those positions may not be filled when you issue the, the bonus. And so if there's not a body in that position, then they wouldn't get it. I think they're all filled now, but they're, you know, there could be a transition happening during that time. And there are four part-time employees. So should part-time employees in the sheriff's office get a bonus, part of a bonus, that is also a question. So it's 22 and four. And so I did do the math for the board previously, but I don't have that in front of me. But it's, you know, 4,000 that we would get from the state would cover the 22 times 500, so 11,000.
So 7,000 plus, but that doesn't include the part timers. Are they, are they half-time employees or?
And then, you know, I think you're splitting hairs once you get to that point.
Okay.
I think you had 13,188 local expense, but if.
I think that math is wrong on that draft.
Yeah, his math is wrong. There was eight.
Yeah, it's eight.
But you still, you had 37,000 for all employees.
If you were to, yeah, all employees of which there were 60 some odd, and depending on, does that include social services? Does it include library? You know, there's so many different versions that the board could consider. Now, I understand the schools did, may do something with a bonus based on a donation that they received, but I, I don't know the details of that.
That would have to be run for this board too.
I don't know that you, if, I don't know the school boards have to. The way school boards run under Chapter 22.1 and you, we run under Chapter 15.2 of the Code of Virginia, and these, this requirement is in 15.2.
How can they spend money that this board doesn't appropriate?
Well, the appropriation would certainly have to come through the board.
That's where I was getting at. I mean.
Yeah, but they could, yeah, they have a lot of discretion on which, how to spend the dollars that they have. Now, if they wanted to provide a raise to their employees, I've, I've read that that is an interest, then they would want to unfreeze some of the, thaw some of the frozen money from the budget. But that's a topic you'll have at a future meeting.
I just personally know a lot of people that are running on reduced funds this year. And they still have a tax bill to pay on December 5. If we don't approve any additional bonuses, what would happen with the, the money the state's putting forward?
Very good question. We don't, I'm not sure. I'm not sure how it will be written. And it would, I would presume that they can't force you to adopt an ordinance to give a bonus. I'm not sure that, I'm not sure how that would be received by at least eight sworn deputies.
So these, these bonuses are earmarked for law enforcement?
By the General Assembly.
So why couldn't we take that money and hand it over to the sheriff to divvy out as she saw fit according to, you know, who she thought deserved it according to what they were doing?
Well, I don't know the, I don't know the exact wording that will come from the General Assembly. This will be written into the budget bill. And so it'll be based on that. But right now, my recollection is how it's worded is $500 plus employee portion of Social Security, et cetera, for sworn law enforcement officers. So if that's what it says, I don't think you have the leeway to hand $4,000 to the sheriff and say divvy it up however you want.
Right. So it looks like that we don't have enough information to make a decision anyway. And what we do, in anticipation of what's going to come forth from the governor, we do have to advertise for a.
If the board wants to, if, if you were forced to issue a bonus to these law enforcement officers, it makes a lot of sense to do that in December. And the intent of the General Assembly was December 1, which I think is probably not going to happen. But I think you could advertise the public hearing in a way that remains flexible relative to the total number of employees or sheriff employees that would get a bonus. And then at least get that process going, get the ads in the paper, and then on December 7, after you have the public hearing and receive public input, fill in the blank, as long as we constrain it so the public knows that it could go from here to here.
Yeah.
What blank would be filled in under that scenario on December 7?
Who's getting what, yeah?
And what could we do now to meet advertising requirements and sufficient public notice? Because I thought that the sufficiency of the notice hinged on our determination tonight of who would get the bonuses.
The cleanest way to do it is to very clearly identify who's going to get a bonus. However, when you amend an ordinance, you can advertise for a range of options and select from that range of options after you hear from the public, the public hearing. Otherwise, what's the point of a public hearing? So I think you could structure the public hearing notice and the draft ordinance with options. And then have, as long as the public understands, those who may want to show up for the public hearing, understand the range of actions that the board may take, you're covered. Then they would know they should come and talk if they think one of those options is important.
I think it's a good idea to keep as many doors open as possible. And if you could devise an advertisement for a public hearing that would do that, and we could make a decision based on the input we got then and in the meantime. I, I understand Mr. Frazier's concern, and I agree with that. However, on the other hand, it seems like law enforcement these days are having an extra hard time. And they may need a little encouragement, but this can remain open until, you know, we have a public hearing and, and have whatever options that are available.
I mean, I, my view is this whole thing is driven by a state, state level initiative for, related to law enforcement. Clearly, law enforcement's never closed, ever. And obviously, limiting it arbitrarily under some state system to aid individuals seems, well, it seems arbitrary. So, I mean, I, in my view, I agree with Mr. Frazier that we have to be careful here. And I think there's a big difference between, you know, very difficult economic time, between possible $7,000 or $8,000 cash outlay versus potentially over $30,000. In my mind, it's, I feel like this is a law enforcement related initiative. It's kind of where I'm headed in my thinking, having, having talked with at least one person today about it. But I don't.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we have CARES funds still available in our account?
That's a difficult question to answer.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
So you've allocated the CARES dollars to many different purposes, to include paying for Public Safety Payroll, to make up the full amount that we need to make up. So it's all allocated one way or another. We have received 1.286 million dollars in cash, and we will keep that. We will be spending out on unique expenses less than that. And so, yes, there is cash available for purposes such as this. And I know that is confusing. Accounting.
I, I do understand what Mr. Frazier is saying. And Mr. Whitson is spot on with the rescue, or the sheriff's office did not get time off for good behavior with COVID. And, you know, given, from the business standpoint, my mind says, we didn't give raises, we froze that money, saying we didn't have money to give raises, or we were concerned that our bottom line wasn't going to look good because of sales and stuff like that. We've proven so far that we were cautious the way we should be, but we're okay financially at this point. And to give people, employees that work for us, this $500 bonus, to me, is very positive for morale. It's right before Christmas, and it's a great way to say thank you to your staff.
So maybe we should try to find a way to keep it open and, and have a hearing on the 7th.
I think we should.
And just all think it through.
Yep. I'm here what others have to say. I've only spoken with a few.
Well, and I would say too, that a lot of our county employees, you know, they're, they are essential personnel. They have been in the office every day. Maybe the door wasn't open, but they were there doing the work. Our employees and constitutional officers showed a lot of initiative this year in getting out tax bills and making sure that revenue comes in, and really making sure that essential functions continued seamlessly throughout this whole ordeal. I know we had to put the personnel manual and salary review that we'd hoped to undertake this year sort of went on the back burner, as so many things did, because we could only address essential business for a number of months. And so that was work that I think we all hope to get done this year. And, you know, we, we continue to ask our employees to wait for increases. And I, I think it would be foolhardy to give an increase without knowing the ramifications in terms of how we're impacting salary without reviewing that study. So this is, to me, an opportunity to recognize people's work and thank them for their continued good service and, and their seamless work. And, and also knowing that they've incurred additional expenses too to show up every day, childcare and things like that, that, that folks have incurred in order to, to execute their essential duties. So I, I think it's a good idea to leave it open and take feedback. And we can discuss it at the December meeting, come to a conclusion then. Does, does that give you enough direction, Mr. Curry?
Yes. So I think there's consensus to advertise the public hearing is necessary to consider an ordinance on the 7th. And that advertise in a way that would allow the board to adopt an ordinance that would range anywhere from all sheriff employees to all county employees. Does that sound right? That would be the range.
Yeah, that sounds good.
I think that's appropriate.
If that's your consensus, I think I can do that.
Given the potential for a large public comment period, do we need to do anything Zoom-wise or to make sure everybody has a chance to speak?
We can. We have the capability. The meeting is scheduled to happen at the courthouse. But we can certainly provide Zoom as a method for citizens to participate.
I do know we have some citizens that are concerned about the lack of mask wearing in our meetings. That would give them an opportunity to still be heard, but not be concerned about their health.
So does email and letters and all of that, you know, are options too?
Yep.
Could we have the evening session here at the elementary school?
When I checked into availability for November, the response was, yes, we're good. But as we get into December, the winter sports are starting to turn back on, and we may start to get some conflicts. After we get out to December, the auditorium should be back available at the high school, but December may be tricky.
Okay. All right. So that takes us to the last item. As long as you have clear direction, Mr. Curry?
Yeah, if somebody wants to make a motion to what I said, that's fine. Otherwise, I believe I understand what the board wants.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I don't think it's necessary. No.
Okay, very good. It's a work session. We don't normally get into motions. So, public comment, same rules as at the earlier public comment period apply. If you could raise your hand, I'll identify you. And if you could approach the microphone and identify yourself by name and the district that you're from, and keep your comments to three to five minutes, we should be all set. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? Mr. Teekelman?
First comment I'd like to make is, you people should get a little closer to your microphones, or if you're speaking across to each other, put your microphone between yourself and the person you're speaking to. You're almost unintelligible out here. Seriously, can't hear you. I'm, I'm rising, my name is Bill Teekelman. I'm from Hampton District, and I'm rising to address the principle number four, chapter six of the plan. And I just read this and my jaw dropped.
Could you quote a page, please, Mr. Teekelman?
Page 88, please.
Thank you.
Now, we have more going on in this county than just merely our ridge lines and our open spaces. We have the historical towns and villages. We have a lot of other things going on, but this plan, it, policy number one said, says that they want to encourage residential development within the designated village areas. Infill development to be preferred to allow the broadest possible range of housing opportunities, styles, configurations, and affordability. and affordability within the context of rural agricultural community. Sounds innocuous. But this would allow for, are you familiar with what appears to be an old motel across from the Glassworks? They would encourage building like that. That, that makes that perfectly acceptable. There's a precedent for it. I don't think we want stripped buildings. I don't think we want multifamily architecture. I don't think we want to impose on the villages' septic systems, which are already, without, you know, they're not prepared for a large amount of development. But this seems to be encouraging. And, and I don't think we really want to look into, look at our county in terms of building industrial areas out of our villages. I, I think that's totally counterproductive. I think the historical character of our villages is one of our big draws to tourism, just as much as our ridge tops are. And I think it's perfectly possible to accommodate growth, just the natural growth, without harming our ridge tops, right? Just without destroying the historical character of our towns and villages. There are plenty of little hollows around here. There are woods to put people in. There's no reason that we can't spread our development out. If you, if we spread on into the community, found a way to do that, there are ways, we discussed it another time. But if we could integrate growth into places where it couldn't be seen, the septic would, would go into the ground, just the same as it normally does. We wouldn't need a whole new septic system, a whole new treatment plant. I, I think that we really, I'm, I'm not going to go on anymore, but I, I think that this is, I just read the whole thing, end to end. Now, it looks like a kid's from high school's term paper. They hadn't do anything till the last week, and then just patched a lot of stuff together. It doesn't, it's not comprehensive. It's not really a plan. And it really doesn't even state the challenges that we're going to be facing in the future, except in terms of aging population. Pretty much, that's the end of it. I think it needs a whole new reworking. You need to think this over again. The idea of destroying our, the historical character of our villages of unbridled development, it just strikes terror in my heart.
Thank you, Mr. Teekelman.
Thanks a lot.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? All right. And do I have a motion? Oh, I'm so sorry, Ms. Gressinger, I didn't see you.
I just want to do like a cautionary tale, because when I hear things of no growth and limiting growth, I think we have to pay attention to what's going on in the past in our county. I wrote a letter to the editor just this past week, I think, or a week ago. And I said, think about what we used to have. We used to have acres of apple trees. They're gone. That's hundreds of jobs. Look around your county. Look at a lot of the houses that we have. They've now been repurposed into businesses because we don't have large families anymore. Possibly what we need to redirect our thinking into regaining what we used to have. And so, that's going to be the focus of economic growth. It's not economic growth, oh my gosh, it's economic growth to replace what we used to have, the viability that we used to have. It's the aging population that we have now, and we don't have the opportunities for so many jobs for kids. So we need to encourage families to come here, that kind of thing, to regain the vitality and, and the wonderfulness that we used to have. We have a wonderful county, but it's, we're going down the road to extinction if we go into this no growth, because that's, it's extreme negative. The other thing, I did listen to the video of the 7 o'clock meeting when Mr. Conick was talking. And he expressed frustration that he had actually put into place a planning commission, a report that he sent to the Board of Supervisors. And he said, during the time that he's been the chair, he's never heard anything back. Well, I got to thinking, we do have a representative to the planning commission from the Board of Supervisors. So instead of having yet another meeting, why can't that person either put it on the agenda or have some way of reporting, saying, we've received this, in, in addition to reporting what, what they are experiencing, acknowledge this work report that somebody like Mr. Conick has put forth, and then you've established a better line of communication, which I think can be of benefit to everybody. And I'll, I'll tell you why I'm saying that. I was talking to my daughter-in-law last week, and she talked about a friend of hers who had international travel was her, part of her business. And she said, this year, she's been reduced to Zoom meetings, and she is so tired of meetings. So I think this is a, a better way to eliminate yet another meeting and, and keep your, your communication lines going for the benefit of all of us. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Gressinger. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, you do.
In a second?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill, you can hear me when I talk, can't you?
Yeah.
I've, no one's a.